All right, it's 7:47. We'll begin the public hearings if everybody would please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clifford Buffalo?
Here.
Joanne Cal?
Here.
John Horn? Alan Shiner? Sam Spada?
Here.
Vivian Welton?
Here.
Juan Rosales?
Here.
Notice is hereby given that the Town of Shandaken Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 274-B of the state law and as prescribed by the district schedule of area and bulk regulations of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant. Regarding an application for a-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you speak into the microphone?
Regarding an application for a special use permit submitted by Paul and Marianne Hilton for a parcel located at 195 Broad Street Hollow Road in Shandaken, further described as SBL number 5.4-1-45.200, located in a residential three-acre zoning district, said parcel consisting of 5.5 acres. The applicant is seeking a special use permit in order to convert an existing garage to an accessory dwelling unit. The public hearing is scheduled for September 10, 2025, at 6:45 PM at the Shandaken Town Hall, 7209 Route 28, Shandaken, New York. Anyone who wishes to make comment regarding this application may do so during the public hearing. If you are unable to attend, you may send any comments you would like read during the meeting to buildingzoning@shandaken.gov or PO Box 134, Shandaken, New York, 12480. All such comments must be received no later than September 10, 2025, at 3 o'clock PM.
Okay, would the applicant please come up and present their project in brief?
Do you need a copy of this?
Um, yes.
Is that planted?
Yes, please. Just speak about what you'd like to do.
Okay, so we put up a two-story garage, basically finishing the second floor to convert into an additional bedroom and a bathroom, just for family use. Existing house is only a two-bedroom, very small, I have a growing family, and we're just trying to expand.
And you're not changing the footprint of the structure, correct?
Correct.
Anybody sign up to speak about this?
No.
No one here, say.
Okay.
Okay.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Hilton about this project?
No.
Okay. All right, then, in that case, we discussed this at the last meeting, and I will take a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. You're good. All done? Next step?
Yeah, you gotta hang out till the regular meeting. Next one was seven, yeah?
Yes.
We got one more before you guys. Sorry, we gotta run out the clock a little. The official start time of the next public hearing is seven, so look at your phones, use the bathroom, get some water. Moving that wrong?
Yeah. Oh, I have a virus watch.
It says it's 10:30.
We're classically just like the Cooper.
Oh.
It's good to have a clock. It's good to have a clock.
Hey, Olivia, we gotta correct this on our agenda.
I know, I know, I'm sorry.
I don't really sign up. Oh, here's the sign up.
Yeah, right here. I know, I'll make that on. You just now want me to listen to you? What's that, the leeway today? The leeway. It's on our- But it's not a hearing, though. No.
I mean, she is.
The applicant's not here.
Oh, leeway?
The leeway. We hope they were asked to be here.
I don't know.
It's a discussion.
Yeah, I know.
It's Mike Mordeau.
Mike Mordeau.
He's not here. And Alan's not here, so our big point was to have a discussion without Alan.
Yes, there's Alan.
I'm always saying-
Yeah.
Wait a minute, our Alan? Although I've been to Alan's Chinese. No, because he's traveling, so.
Oh, is that where he is?
I don't know. He's actually gonna be gone for-
For three months. Or three meetings.
Three meetings.
Ladies and gentlemen, somebody in a Nissan Frontier has their lights on. It's just loud. Anytime. Uh, can you drop me's off?
Yeah. He officially is on.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Again, it's another one that-
It's Shandra's officially in now.
Okay, so they voted to put her in the alternate.
Yes.
So she wouldn't be here.
That can be dropped off?
Yes. No, she's a member.
Oh, that's right. Oh, I'm sorry.
They should call her name, though.
And Alan said ahead of time he's not even here.
But you're gonna start. I didn't know. She couldn't like it.
Nobody told us. I mean, it just happened this morning.
Someone told me that it is. Sam?
Oh, here you are, I was just gonna look.
Sam, did you say you voted on the alternate?
I heard that they passed, they had the resolution read out, and they all voted in favor. That's what I heard on the video today. They accepted John Horn's resignation, so that's definite, and there was a resolution that was passed.
So they have to accept that resignation?
She's got the my last.
Apparently, they did.
Yeah, the other's-
So technically, he was still-
I've got enough maps.
Not as of tonight. Because that wasn't on the eighth.
Who, do you know who this is?
The one with the laptop? I think Everett. Yeah, so that's, it's connected to that. That's the counter.
Hank signed up to speak. He can read the double.
All those people came to see it.
Feels good, though.
I like it.
Fancy. I like the fancy.
Ramandi?
I know.
Ramandi, yeah.
That game went into double overtime, and they still tied. Double overtime, and my kid got slammed twice, once in the hand, and I haven't had a chance to see it. So if I get a weird phone call and I gotta go, I gotta-
I don't think we have match.
I told my mom, I was like, she's not gonna want you to look at it. You have to make her let you see. Her nut was at least.
I don't see why not. Coming down the door?
So Hilton, no one tried?
It's too loud, yeah, it's very loud. Yeah, please keep it closed. The road noise gets oppressive, yeah. Oh, I think everyone's here. Yep. Hate that sound so much. People drag plans across the vehicle phones. I hate that sound. I will share. Can you see real pace?
No matter if you're building. And they closed it.
You ready? All right, if everyone would quiet down, we're gonna begin the next public hearing. This is for Carol Ramandi. Olivia?
Notice is hereby given that the Town of Shandaken Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 274-B of state law and as prescribed by the district schedule of area and bulk regulations of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant. Regarding an application for subdivision submitted to the planning board by Donald Brewer on behalf of Carol Gilberty Ramandi for a parcel located at 403-406 Silver Hollow Road in Chichester, New York, further identified as SBL number 14.1-2-29, located in a residential three-acre and residential five-acre zoning district. The applicant is seeking approvals to subdivide the existing 56.9-acre parcel into two parcels. Individual lot acreage to be Lot 1, 17.9 acres, Lot 2, 39 acres. The public hearing is scheduled for September 10, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Shandaken Town Hall, 7209 Route 28, Shandaken, New York. Anyone who wishes to make comment regarding this application may do so during the public hearing. If you are unable to attend, you may send any comments you would like read during the meeting to buildingzoning@shandaken.gov or PO Box 134, Shandaken, New York, 12480. All such comments must be received no later than September 10, 2025, at 3 o'clock PM.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, so the Ramandis, they own about 58 acres, which is split by Silver Hollow Road. On the south of Silver Hollow Road, they have a house, Septic Well. On the north side, there's a house at Septic Well. So we're just asking for that not to be one lot, but two lots. One lot will be on the north side of Silver Hollow Road, one lot on the south side. On the south side will be 40 acres, and the site on the north side will be about 18 acres. Pretty much subdivided by the road anyways.
Anybody sign up for this one?
No.
The board have any more questions for John that we did not ask him the other day?
No.
Okay. I don't have anything further, then I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
She's good. That's because she's not left-handed. You two are lefties. That's why I said that.
I can't say that. It's not because I'm left-handed.
Olivia, Joanne envies your right-handedness.
No, I don't. I just have a right-handed face. I'm left-handed. And a right-handed girl.
Not that many?
Everything is right-handed.
Could you give everybody a last chance to sign?
Uh, the next, the next public hearing will be Verizon. Has everyone signed up that would like to speak?
My favorite person.
All right. It's time, if you would come up and present, please, thank you. I said, go ahead, you can begin.
Do you want her to?
Oh, read the notice, yes.
Read the notice.
I mean, if you don't want me to-
No, no, skipping ahead.
All right. Notice is hereby given that the Town of Shandaken Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 274-B of the state law and as prescribed by the district schedule of area and bulk regulations of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following application. An application for a special use permit was submitted to the planning board by Verizon Wireless for a parcel located off New York Route 28 in Phoenicia, further identified as SBL number 14.13-3-32, located in a Hamlet residential zoning district. The applicant is seeking approval to erect a telecommunications tower. Verizon Wireless proposes to install and operate a new communications tower facility, including an approximately 170-foot, 75, I'm sorry, tall lattice-style tower and related antennas and equipment within a 48-by-64 secured fenced compound. The planning board will also accept comments during the hearing on the County of Ulster's proposal to extend the proposed 175-foot tower, if approved by the planning board, to 195 feet, 199 with a four-foot lightning rod, which the county proposes pursuant to the County of Monroe balancing test as originally established by the New York Court of Appeals in matter of County of Monroe versus City of Rochester, 72, New York, 2D 338, 1988. The public hearing is scheduled for September 10, 2025, at 7:05 PM at the Shandaken Town Hall, 7209 Route 28, Shandaken, New York. Anyone who wishes to make comment regarding this application may do so during the public hearing. If you are unable to attend, you may send any comments you would like read during the meeting to shandakenbldg@gmail.com or PO Box 134, Shandaken, New York, 12480. All such comments must be received no later than 3 o'clock PM on September 10, 2025.
Good evening, my name's Scott Olson. I represent Verizon Wireless. I'll be relatively brief, because I've been before the door a bunch of times, and as you know, we did amend the application. The original application was proposed to be 195-foot tower. Verizon originally only needed about 175-foot tower, give or take. You currently have in your zoning code a maximum tower height of 100 feet. The county needs to be above 180 feet, so our original application was therefore for the 195. We needed the variance for height from the ZBA that was denied, so we, instead of challenging that in a federal lawsuit, we decided to kind of restrategize and figure out a different manner to kind of approach this. And we did that by amending the application. So because Verizon can get by with a tower that's lower than your 180-foot maximum tower height, we're proposing 175 feet. Obviously, that will not accommodate the county's needs. And the county is asking for, basically, if you were to approve the Verizon application, there are ways to extend the tower without needing a variance, and that's what the county's basically doing. And I think they're gonna have a presentation after I'm done speaking about why they need this site and what the purposes, what purpose it will serve. So by keeping the tower below 180 feet, we eliminate the need for the height variance. We comply with the setback requirements. Currently, your code does not have any tower-specific setback requirements. Some codes will require the setback to be equal to the height of the tower. That's not the case here. It specifically says comply with the local zoning district setback requirements. In this case, it's 40, 20 feet, 40 feet, 20 feet, 40 feet. That's front, side, and rear. We have more than enough room to accommodate that. Now, your code does have a fall zone requirement, and what that says is the applicant has to design the tower such that it will not fall on adjoining property if it work or fail. And we have a letter from Tectonic Engineering that says the tower will be designed with a breakpoint, so that in the very unlikely chance that it was to fall, it would basically collapse on itself. It would not fall on the adjoining property. So we comply with setbacks, we comply with your maximum height requirement, we comply with the fall zone requirement. During the last meeting, there was some talk about an alternative location, kind of kitty corner across the street, so to speak. And as Mr. Doyle mentioned, I don't know if, he mentioned it, oh, let me just say, he mentioned it, that's not a viable option for us, because when the county was looking into it, they found deed restrictions. That said, cell towers cannot be used on the property. So that is, that keeps us out. And I know the county made effort to try to locate all the beneficiaries of that restriction to see if they could release it, but they couldn't find all of them. So we legally cannot use that property. If we were to use it, someone could sue us and kick us off. So there's no way for us to use that as an alternative. The survey, that was an issue. I did get confirmation today that the, what you see on the plan is accurate. So that overhead power line is not on Mr. Omehay's property. I know he thinks it is, but our surveyor looked at monumental documents, monuments in the field along that boundary line, compared it to the deed description, and they told me they confirmed that property line is correct and accurate. So the tower is, I forget what the exact setback is, but it's officially setback from the property line. The overhead lines are on our landlord's property, and we're gonna have a final survey that we can share with the board. They know stamped. It's not stamped now, because we have to do a SWIP. And until the SWIP design is completed, they won't basically sign and seal it. But I've got confirmation that that property line is correct and accurate. That is essentially what I want to talk about. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know the county wants to talk to you about why they need this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
County representative, please come up.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Everett Erickson. I'm the Director of Emergency Services for the county. And I just wanted to take some time to discuss the need for radio communication in the western portion of Ulster County, specifically Town of Shandaken. So currently, we are operating on legacy radio system. It's split between VHF and low band. We find our law enforcement and EMS agency on VHF, and we're finding our fire departments using low band. Currently, we're using 10 sites for simulcast paging, six sites for two-way radio communications through our public safety answering point, which is our 911 center. There's a severe lack of interoperability between law enforcement, fire, and EMS when it comes to operations. I know that there are some fire chiefs in the room that can speak to that this evening. There are numerous incidents where we have severe trouble communicating with them. There are numerous incidents where we have extreme trouble dispatching them, okay? So it is a serious issue. If we cannot dispatch them, they are not going to be able to come, all right? So we need to have redundant and successful ways to dispatch your first responder personnel in this area, okay? I'm just gonna show you some current coverage maps, okay, for fire department paging, fire department radio, and law enforcement EMS radio, okay? So this is currently what, how the county is covered when it comes to their radio system. We understand that this is a county-wide issue. That's why we are building out our system to a 16-site system from our six-site system. And as you can see on the map, it's blatantly clear that we have a serious problem out in the western portion of Ulster County, more than, more than anywhere else. A lot of the technology, that's daily operation incident management, because it's so outdated, interoperability is essential for today's multi-agency response, okay? There's a lot of collaboration that needs to occur. In today's volunteer fire service, okay, volunteer fire service, there's a lot of requests for additional resources coming from outside of your community. There's a lack of interoperability there, which is a severe hazard to those operating on the scene, okay? So we need to be able to communicate with everyone. Same thing, that's on the fire side, same thing on the EMS side. Although, although on the EMS side, it's more paid, there is a lack of interoperability there as well. And you, we're seeing more and more mutual aid between EMS agencies. Law enforcement-wise, we see a lot of additional law enforcement coming into the Town of Shandaken as well to support the police department here, you have the sheriff's office and the state police, okay? We also have the state police that come in from neighboring counties to assist. Our new system is a 16-site system network for law enforcement, fire, and EMS that allows for interoperability. They would be able to communicate on one system to each other on VHF, okay? Unified communications for all the services. And the Phoenicia site that's being discussed tonight is a critical site to ensure coverage in the Town of Shandaken, okay? It fills a gap, and I'm gonna show you a coverage map of that gap that it starts to fill. It is extremely important to us, to the project as a whole. Without it, the town does not get very good coverage, but also, it's a ring system, so it needs to be in there to bring the entire system together, okay? So here's fire department radio with the Phoenicia site. As you see, okay, portable is to the left, mobile is on the right. You start to see how it starts to fill in- You start to see how it starts to fill in those gaps. This is just a zoomed-in picture of the coverage area, okay? Here's the law enforcement radio, okay? Portable on the left, mobile on the right. It starts to fill in the gaps for emergency responders. It's extremely important. Getting into cellular integration, okay? Cellular integration in today's day and age in operations is extremely, extremely important, okay? It's important for critical incident command and coordination, okay? We are all on our cellular devices, communicating information. A lot of applications are all done on cellular devices, okay? Local state, federal officials rely heavily on the cellular networks, okay? It enhances resiliency during disasters when traditionally infrastructure fails, okay? We send out I-Pause messages through a federal system, okay? And as you see there, if we do not have cellular communication, you will not receive these Just because you, and in certain areas, you may have service, okay? And just because there's a difference between service and signal, right? Bars don't equal usable service capacity and backhaul matter in disasters, okay? The network could be overloaded, right? So we need to have strong infrastructure when it comes to cellular. And then the shared public benefit, not only responders, but every resident gains reliable service, okay? Cellular and nine-one-one, there's a lot of misinformation out there regarding, you know, well, you can use satellite. Well, that's not a hundred percent correct, okay? If there is no carrier having coverage, okay, and there's no satellite, there is no nine-one-one call that can be made, okay? You need to have clear vision to the sky from where you are in order to get that satellite, okay? And I'm going to go into a couple more things with that. If you do have satellite and there's no carrier coverage, okay, that message that you send goes to a clearinghouse, but that's if you have satellite set up on your phone, right? So it goes to a clearinghouse, for lack of a better term, and it then gets, the information then gets relayed to the nine-one-one center. So it's an indirect relay to your county nine-one-one center. It's not you contacting nine-one-one, okay? And then the other one is if, say you have Verizon, okay, you have Verizon service, and there's an A T and T tower there, so Verizon doesn't have coverage. What occurs is that you can call nine-one-one through the other carrier, and it will go to the nine-one-one center, okay? So if another carrier has service there, it will go through. There are some additional things that go along with that satellite coverage, though. One is it's only available on I O S iPhones fourteen and older, newer, I mean, okay? So that will function. It's limited to two-year free subscription, okay? After that, you're now paying for it, okay? And additionally, what needs to happen is that you need to set it up. So if it's not set up prior, it's not going to work. It needs to be set up in your phone system ahead of time to allow for satellite coverage, okay? And then there's a question unit to fill out. It gets submitted into that clearinghouse. The clearinghouse then receives it, and then they submit it to the local nine-one-one center based off of where you are. That clearinghouse is usually run by the satellite company that you're hitting. Same thing goes with your Pixel or Samsung phones, okay? They're starting to roll that out as well, okay? But it's not cut and dry when it comes to having nine-one-one capability. The other thing is, you know, we can build out a radio system. You need to be able to call nine-one-one, okay? Ulster County has a huge risk, okay? We have a very big risk profile. Ulster County has had eighteen federally declared disasters since nineteen ninety, okay? The highest in the Hudson Valley region. We were ranking second in New York State, only to Delaware County, okay? And that data goes back to nineteen fifty-four. Flooding, winter storms, hurricanes, severe weather, and continue to threaten our region. Out here, you are familiar with flooding. We've had severe flooding out in this area, the western portion of the county, okay? Nineteen eighty, we go back to nineteen eighty, six million dollar in flood damages, two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six, and two thousand seven. Four years back-to-back heavy rainfall, extreme flooding, extreme damage to roadway infrastructure, to residential infrastructure. Twenty-eleven tropical storm Irene devastated the Phoenisha and Sopas Creek corridor, okay? Power outages, communication failures, worsened disaster response. A lot of the stuff that we do are done over these networks. We need a strong network in order to operate. Just to look at some of the call volume, okay, that occurs within the town of Shandaken, this is throughout the town. Fire incident call volume, two hundred and eighty-four calls in two thousand and twenty-four. Police incident call volume is over eight thousand calls. E M S incident call volume is five hundred and nineteen calls. The community benefits is that we need, you know, daily operations, reliable radio for first responders. It's extremely important. They need to be able to communicate with our nine-one-one center. They need to be able to communicate amongst each other. We can't have the incidences that have occurred where they are walking down the street, knocking on the door, and trying to get onto a landline, okay? That's inefficient. It's putting people in harm's way. It's not responsible, and we need to address that. Disaster response, cellular radio redundancy is required. Public safety and quality of life, residents gain improved cellular service, and that shared infrastructure that we're looking to have here is cost-effective investment serving multiple needs. So again, the Shandaken tower site in Phoenisha, it's essential, okay? It's not an optional thing for us. This just breaks down the call volume a little bit more, based off of motor vehicle accidents, critically E M S calls, okay? So motor vehicle accidents, one hundred and sixty-one, critically E M S calls, which is like an A L S is two hundred and forty-four, fires and fire alarms, one hundred and twenty-two, disputes including domestics, fifty-five, erratic vehicles, forty, psychiatric emergencies, fourteen, suspicious incidents, sixty-three, and welfare checks, one hundred and fifty-nine. Just getting into the technology that we're currently using and why we need this infrastructure, okay? Our computer dispatch, okay, they go to Dutchess and Green Counties. Also, we're looking at some additional adjacent counties that we're working with to share our CAD with and send our CAD on calls when we take a call on the county border. Mobile mobility, okay? Our fire departments, our E M S agencies, and our law enforcement agencies have mobile within the car that requires cellular network in order to run plates, okay, receive calls on their, in their system, on their computers inside the vehicle, okay? Text to nine-one-one, okay? That's extremely important. I'll just give you a quick rundown of an incident that we had on the eastern border of our county where we had a text to nine-one-one call where a person claiming that she was in distress was able to text. She couldn't call nine-one-one, and she texted nine-one-one through the carrier to our P S app, and we were able to communicate with her while she traversed into another county, all right? And we maintained that connection, and they were able to stop that vehicle within ten, fifteen minutes of traveling and take that individual into custody, okay? So, you know, we're starting to use a lot more technology, and it's very, very important. RAP O S, Rapid S O S, tracking, okay, prepared nine-one-one. We're starting to get into next-generation nine-one-one, okay? Next-gen nine-one-one is digital Internet Protocol-based system that will replace the analog nine-one-one infrastructure that has been in place for decades, okay? You look at a lot of the natural disasters that are happening nationwide and worldwide, right? Specifically, you look at some of the recent ones that occurred down in Florida. The information that's coming into the nine-one-one center, okay, is all I P-based, and what they're doing is they are sharing, you know, video footage, photography of the incident over the I P network to the nine-one-one center. The resources in these large-scale incidents become so, there's such a high demand, it becomes very sparse. We have to start doing a size-up of the incident within the nine-one-one center so we're not sending all the resources to one incident when we have twenty-plus incidents going on at one time, right? So this allows us to start to size up and share information at the time of dispatch to the first responders, okay? It's just enhancing our emergency services. It's making response a lot faster, more resilient, okay? So again, the tower is essential. It's a dual benefit to public safety, reliable cellular, and makes our response a lot stronger, which makes our residents a lot safer. It allows us to be prepared for our next natural disaster, which is going to occur. Another natural disaster will occur, and it will continue to occur in Ulster County, and we need to be ready for it, okay? And it helps us get ready for our next-gen nine-one-one. Any questions for me?
Are we doing this?
No, we're not doing this.
No, we're not, yeah.
No.
I asked the board.
We're going, yeah, public portion will come in. Is that up?
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I have a question. Hello?
Okay.
Sorry. So in the map that showed the coverage.
Yes.
A lot of the area you're covering is wilderness, you know, mountains.
It also includes a lot of the roadway.
Right. Can't it be more targeted? Why do we want a location that covers areas that nobody's living in?
I mean, we don't know, I mean, plenty of times, we have brush fires, wilderness fires, we have hikers that are lost. We have a lot of hikers that are lost up here. We just had a small brush fire, it was a forty-by-forty up in the mountain, right? Just, we just called it under control today, okay? That's on a hiking trail. So we need to be able to communicate everywhere, just not on the twenty-eight corridor. We need to be able to communicate everywhere.
Thank you.
All right?
Come on, Dennis.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank you. My name is Dennis Doyle, and I direct the county. I just want to say a couple of words about what you heard in the announcement, which is the case, the Monroe case, and the balance of public interest test. The balance of public interest test is designed to essentially allow an encroaching municipality that has a significant critical need to override and be granted immunity from the zoning statute. It is literally a classic use of the balance of public interest test in terms of what the county is requesting here to essentially move from a hundred and seventy-five feet to a hundred and ninety-nine feet. So just be aware of the fact that there's a nine-part test, and we believe we can beat that test, and we think that this is a really good use of the balance of public interest test relative to this particular facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the public comment portion. I thank you all for your silence and respect while other people were talking. I'm going to ask for you to continue that. We have a lot of people signed up that would like to speak tonight. So in light of that, we're going to keep everyone to a three-minute time limit, so please condense your comments so you can get through them. And who do we have on the sign-up sheet?
Hank. I don't want to cut things, but I think if I can, I didn't sign up first, but I'd like to, since this particularly pertains to me.
You can come up first, Sam. That's fine.
So Sam Umhais, everybody knows me. So as I think there's a simple solution to this whole thing for a proposal tonight, I just want to address the fact that still with the proposed tower that they're proposing, it is still not in compliance with our effective zoning because we're still too close to my line. And I just want to say also that, and it's Mr. Olson.
Yes.
I would like to address him that, once again, I mean, he is very confident that he knows where the line is. The last meeting that he was here, he said he was getting people up there. They were working on a deck. It's been a month later. There's been nobody there. I have a physical pin in the ground on one side, and I have a physical pin in the ground on the other side. So if they're going to dispute where my power line is, this is a much bigger situation for a much higher court. And I'll give you a story from back in the day, that Ed West was a surveyor.
We, hey, Sam's going to cut you off. We will be requiring a survey from him. That's clear, not stamped and certified.
Josh Byer is here to offer his property. So they're saying they're coinciding nine-one-one and Verizon together again. As I understand, they were going to look at a property that Bob Cross is offering. The covenant isn't in there is for a cellular tower. It is not for nine-one-one. It is open for them. So Josh is offering his property that has no restrictions on it. It is at fourteen-hundred-and-eighty feet versus eleven-hundred, so it'll accommodate a lot lower tower. And in this situation, I don't think this is something about money, that if the site costs them more, because I just want to give you, David, I don't see your name on here, but I just want to let you know what all of them received in two thousand and twenty-four, and it's millions of dollars in salary. And county just tries to go on Verizon's because they're getting on there for free. So I don't think it's a matter of dollars for them either because we know a lot of times where dollars go with county here and the people in the room. And I'd just like to say that it shouldn't be about money. There is a better spot. Our town has spoken with the town board meeting on how they feel on this site, and I think this site should be taken into consideration. So if Josh comes up and offers, I think this should halt the situation, and they should be made to go look at that settlement.
Thank you.
And I actually have some photos that I'm going to send around to the public for this site of their concern, so I'm going to start sending them first row. This is what the siding is for both sides right now. Also, the opposition was for deciding in time. Are we offering that?
Thank you, Sam. Who do we have next on the list?
Hank. Williams.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Hank Williams. I'm also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals in the town of Shandaken and one of the members that voted to deny the variances for the cell tower. We didn't just deny the variances for the height and the fall zone. There were a lot of things that we took into consideration. We took into the D U S H A of the scenic byway. We took into consideration the character of the neighborhood. We took into consideration the height levels of the properties around the tower, and one of the height levels was Mr. Umhais' property, where this tower would be, if he's looking out of his front window, would be looking at the top of the tower or close to the top of the tower. We've given them options, and I do resent the fact that Mr. Olson states that the Zoning Board of Appeals denied their request for these variances, and it was unlawful and against the nineteen eighty-six Telecommunications Act, which we feel is not true. We treated this variance like any other variance that comes before us. We treated it with respect, and we treated it in a way that everybody that came forward had a right to speak. None of the town officials were there to speak. None of the county officials were there to speak, and we did what we thought was right, and we still believe that. And as far as Rochester versus Monroe County, I have a New York State governmental immunity from zoning, which deals exactly with Rochester versus Monroe, and I think that one would hope that you guys has a copy, that you would review that, look at it. The nine steps does not make it clear that the county has a right to violate our zoning if you read all the nine steps and also review Rochester versus Monroe and all the other issues that came after that. They're not clear-cut, they're not like this. They're usually bridging borders between two municipalities. And generally, cell towers throughout the United States aren't shoehorned into residential neighborhoods zoned H R one-point-five. They're normally in municipalities, municipal properties. So in this instant case, I think that it would be in the best interest of Verizon and the county to look at different sites that are available to them and not just broad-brush it and say that we're not going to look at another site because our engineers say that this site is perfect for what we want. I mean, if they said in town where the Phoenisha Hotel was is a perfect site with a tower, would we be... with a tower, would we be addressing that issue like we are to this one? I'm sure that nobody would agree that a tower would be in the middle of Phoenisha.
Thank you, Hank.
And also with the town district use of regulations, 116-10, it states that hamlet residential properties are prohibited from telecommunication facilities. Only R3 and R5 can get a special permit to build those facilities. So I think that it is against our code and it's not just that piece of property.
Thank you.
I wrote a letter. That was.
We have the letter.
All right. I would like Olivia to read the letter so the people in this, the residents of the town can hear.
She can give it to him if he'd like to read it.
Yeah. Do you like to read your letter?
Yes.
I don't have the letter. I sent it to, it could be on the communications with the zoning office.
Well.
I mean, you don't want Olivia to read my letter?
Olivia has, you're here if you'd like to read your letter. You wrote it. Olivia has many letters to read tonight.
I sent it to the.
It's right there. Olivia has many letters to read tonight. It's just you're here. I was just giving you the opportunity to read it.
Yeah, okay. Can it be read?
I didn't say it couldn't be read. I gave you the opportunity to read it.
Can they read?
Letters are, we'll do letters at the end. Oh, you can do it now if it's upsetting. You can go ahead and read the letter.
I can do it now. Okay. All right. So this is to Verizon Wireless from Henry T. Williams, acting chairman from zoning board of appeals. Denial of application for Verizon telecommunications tower located at SBL 14.13-3-2, Route 28, Phoenisha, New York. This report summarizes the decision of the zoning board of appeals to deny the application for variances by Verizon Wireless for the installation of a wireless telecommunications tower at Route 28, SBL 14-13-3-2, situated within the Catskill Mountain Park and adjacent to a designated scenic byway. The Telecommunication Act of 1996 encourages the development of wireless communications and infrastructure. Section 332(c)(7) of the Act preserves the authority of the state and local governments and gives authority to regulate the placement, construction, and modification of Verizon, I'm sorry, of wireless facilities, including the prohibiting of actions that would effectively ban wireless services or unreasonably discriminate among providers. This denial is based on the following grounds, which are believed to be consistent and supported by the Telecommunication Act provisions. Environmental impact. The construction and presence of a cell tower in this area would negatively impact the natural beauty and landscape. This would disrupt local ecosystems, harm wildlife, and affect migratory bird patterns. Visual intrusion. A tower, especially a tall one of 200 feet, will distract from the natural beauty and scenic quality of the Catskill Mountain Park and scenic byway. Aesthetic degradation. A tower of 200 feet tall and industrial-looking when built will not blend into the natural environment, disrupt views, and potentially alter the area's character. It all compromised historic integrity. The presence of a modern cell tower would compromise the historic integrity and aesthetics of the cherished historic and scenic area of the Catskill Mountain Park. Radio frequency. Radiation exposure that cell towers emit neo-anodizing radiation and living near them increases daily exposure. Possible health concerns. Where science is still developing and debating, a growing body of research suggests potential health risks associated with RF radiation, including concerns about effects of fertility, fetal development, and associations with cancer. Verizon Wireless' interest in providing improved wireless service is acknowledged. However, the current proposal represents an unacceptable compromise of the park's critical environmental and aesthetic values. Verizon Wireless is encouraged to continue exploring alternate setting solutions that are less impactful on the sensitive Catskill Mountain Park's environment. This decision is made in writing and is supported by substantial evidence contained within the application review process and administrative records. Sincerely, Henry T. Williams, acting chair of zoning of appeals.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Harry Jamison.
Members of the planning board, Harry Jamison. I'd like to thank you for your continued service. I know it's not a very easy job to do. And thank you for allowing me my public comment. I am interposed to this project for a number of reasons. The first being the significant negative impact to the quality of life of the Umhay family. I don't think there's anybody in this room that would like to have to look out of their window at a 199-foot tower. So that's my first problem with the situation. Second is that basically it has been denied by the ZBA already. It goes against our zoning laws. And I understand public necessity. I don't think there's anybody in the room that is against cell towers or the enhancement of our 911 protection. But it's kind of like eminent domain, you know? Nobody likes to have that done to them. So, you know, public necessity in this case, I don't think should supersede. I'm against because I think the town board went a little overboard trying to do an end run around our zoning code. Our zoning code was built by a lot of people who put a lot of time into it for the benefit of everybody in Shandaken. And to do a quick end run around the whole process just to make this one project work doesn't work for me. The last reason is I sat on two different committees that created two different reports for the town of Shandaken. This one was 1994 and it is named the Resource and Protection and Economic Development Strategy for the Route 28 corridor. This encompasses not only Shandaken, but town, Middletown as well, which basically is scenic byway. The second document is the comprehensive plan for the town of Shandaken, 2005. A number of surveys were sent out to everybody in this town as well. But this document, the main, most important thing that people identified was maintaining our scenic vistas and our ridge lines on Route 28 corridor.
Thank you.
Howard Wodenski. This is a little different form of opinion, but T-Mobile offers a satellite texting service called T-Satellite in partnership with Starlink, allowing users to stay connected in places cell towers can't reach. The service currently supports messaging and location sharing. Non-T-Mobile customers can buy T-Satellite from T-Mobile. I purchased this option to alleviate connectivity with car breakdowns, issues while walking, and the like. Furthermore, two days ago, SpaceX agreed to acquire wireless spectrum and mobile spectrum licenses from EchoStar for use in the Starlink satellite network. Gwen Shotwell, president and COO of SpaceX, said the deal will help the company, quotes, "end mobile dead zones around the world with exclusive spectrum." SpaceX will develop next-generation Starlink direct-to-cell satellites, which will have a steep change in performance and enable us to enhance coverage for customers wherever they are in the world. Now, my point is, Shandaken hasn't had cell service for 35 years. Perhaps we should table this request for the time being for multiple reasons. First and foremost, to see how the new technology plays out as texting and location services is already available. And secondly, to preserve the beauty of Catskill Park. And I did have a couple of questions for county. Can I say them now?
Oh, you can ask the board.
Okay. So basically, in response to county, I've lived through three major hurricanes in South Florida. The system doesn't work, the cell towers. First is overload and then failure. And like I said, I know what a hurricane is. It happens very often. Next thing, they said they had less than 10,000 calls, which would seem to me to be very light usage. And out of that light usage, how many calls have been missed? And again, there is new technology. They spent billions on it. They figured out how to get people off the ground into space. I'm sure they're gonna figure out how to get this done without putting the tower up.
Thank you.
Michael Otavi.
My name is Michael Otavi and I live in, where do I live? I live in the town of Shandaken. But the town of Shandaken is more than just Phoenisha. I live in Chichester and this cell tower thing is something that's only going to benefit, for the most part, Shandaken, I mean, Phoenisha. What about Oliveria Valley and all the other further places that are out? And I was here Monday night trying to educate myself. And basically, from listening to the first responders, they don't seem to have had a problem. I've lived up here over 20 years and we've dealt with all kinds of hurricanes and floods and things like that, removal of the snow without the use of a cell tower. And I don't think that in the current technology, everything keeps changing. I just came back from Cuba. Everybody there has a cellphone that works without a cell tower. That's one thing. The other thing is the scenic byway. That's why we all moved up here. And this thing is going to be an eyesore, no matter how they do it. And finally, the Umhay family is going to be subjected to some kind of health hazards that they don't have any idea of what they're going to subject them to. So it seems to me that I'd rather wait for satellite technology and not have to put up something that for 20 years we haven't got. And it's, who knows if it's going to serve anybody besides Phoenisha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Byer.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Byer, long-term resident of Phoenisha and Shandaken. Yes, I am offering, my family has a property, a large 170-acre parcel that is non-buildable, that is on the, essentially goes out to the point of Sheridan Mountain, which is essentially where the Eagle is in Phoenisha. So it basically bisected by the Route 28 corridor and 214. There's an optimal location there for a cell tower. There is no structures within thousands of feet of it. There will be no structures within thousands of feet of that knoll or where the proposed location would be. I believe it has a better spectrum of hitting all of the necessary locations for communications. There is a road system, that's a rough road system, that is in place already with access all the way to 28. So power access is pretty feasible in a short period of time. And it's, you know, it's, I think as well, you know, in terms of living here my whole life, my family living here our whole lives, you know, the integral beauty of the place, not to be, you know, disturbed by a tower in that way. The nature of the topography of the mountain is, sets back in a way that I think will have the most camouflage. The nature of the mountain is set as in plateaus. So a plateau on which this sits on can step back into the next plateau, so the tree height of the next plateau can somewhat camouflage it. It won't, it will not be on a ridge line. It will be on the nose of the Phoenisha, of Sheridan, which, as I was driving today and trying to look at it, it's not something that stands in the way. There's multiple, kind of the ways that you approach the mountain, the way it looks at it. It's not something that I think in the best interest is not going to really be, it's going to be a limited eyesore, an eyesore that we can't avoid, at least if it's necessary for a tower. So yeah, so I'm offering my property to get an assessment and to make that public so we can all understand what we're looking at, at my site. And that's it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Declan Pien.
Thanks for listening to me. I think this tower is an eyesore. I'm all for cell service. We desperately need it in this area, but not at the expense of the view, having lights put on this tower and upsetting the Umhay family. There's alternate sites that can be developed as well as, I'm also afraid of lawsuits. The last time a tower was proposed for this area, a few hundred feet from where this tower is, a lawsuit brought by, I believe it was Brian Powers and Judith Wyman, among others, with three or 400 of the Shandaken residents signing on to it, was brought against Verizon. I don't know if the town was, but I believe Sammy Umhay was on it as well. We don't need to go through that again. I don't know what kind of legal expenses the town went through with that, but it was needless. The other thing was on Monday night, Supervisor DeScalfani had informed me that the county and Verizon were co-applicants and co-owners of the title of this tower, excuse me. And is who's paying to build the tower? And who is receiving money for renting space on the tower? Thank you for listening. I urge you to vote down this proposal and there's lots of other sites available. Thank you.
Gary Carr.
Good evening, everybody. Gary Carr, currently the chief of Phoenisha Fire District. Speaking mostly on the communication side of things. Forty-two years in the fire service here in town of Shandaken, communication are getting worse. They're not getting better. Through Irene, we had a big communication problem. Just recently, one of the fires we had up in Wildon Valley. I couldn't talk to county. I couldn't talk to trucks with a portable. That's a bad thing. I have to keep running back and forth to a bigger truck to talk to county, which is bad. That's wasting time. So whether or not this is the right site or whatever, I don't know. But communication with cellular needs to be addressed. It's a problem here in the town and it's just getting worse. The technology we have is outdated. It needs to be upgraded, but this is one way to do it. It needs to be addressed. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Derek Stapleton.
Hi, my name is Derek Stapleton. I'm currently the chief of Big Indian Oliveria Fire Department. And out of this whole thing, I have the worst communication in my district. That a few years ago, as most of you guys might know, we had the New York City police officers that got killed on their wedding night. And the only way that we could communicate with county was luckily we had a homeowner that was right there at the scene and he brought his portable phone out and then he was charging them. We were there for nine hours. So with this proposed tower and communications of EMS, it would give my district a fighting chance to take and save more lives and be able to talk to county and get the resources that I need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Winnie.
Did I miss you? No, I didn't.
Good evening. Thank you for having me speak. My name is Chris Winnie. I'm the chief of the Allen Fire Department. I work in your district on a pretty regular basis. Today, I've been in your district 14 times this year. Communications is a very big struggle. We have no cell. Our radios are very, very limited anymore with the technology and the infrastructure of the county is dwindling. I ask you to, Sammy's site may not be the best site. I'm asking you to, as quickly as possible, come to a solution so that we can get communications resolved. I've lived through a firefighter being crushed at an incident and had communications problems. I've lived this nightmare. And I'm gonna tell you right now, right, nobody in this room would want to live through it. All right? I'm asking you folks, please come to a solution. I'm asking the audience, as the property owners, please come to a solution. The county's already heard me. The county's already heard me. The county knows what I have to say. Mr. Erickson back there has listened very deeply to what I've had to say and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ernie Longy.
Thank you for listening and being part of the board here. I just wanna say, I think everybody in the room agrees that everything here is vital to this community. Nobody is actually against this, we're just against the site in itself. Everybody wants to, you know, move forward with technology, but everybody also wants to do it in a safe way. So I wrote the, a letter to the board as well as community members. I understand that there's a lot of moving parts and factors that go into where the towers are placed. Let us not forget that the life we all choose to live here in this area is based on our choice to surround ourselves with nature and the peace it offers and the overwhelming love and support we all show our neighbors when they're in need. We have always been a community governed and built on protecting our peace, our community members. I encourage you all not to forget that when you are contemplating this decision. While I'd imagine it's, being sold is safe and backed by the FCC who sets strict standards in radio frequencies, things that are left out are the major risk factors because they support and they put forward studies against animals instead of humans. So they say since it wasn't studied against a human, they don't truly back it. So there's no actual evidence. That's just not true. Particularly with the National Library of Medicine affiliated with the National Center of the Biotechnology Information, radio frequency sickness, headaches, dizziness, nausea, fatigue, memory loss, sleep disturbances. This was evident in 73.9% of the people studied. That's 17 out of 23 people that put that through. Cancer was the second risk factor. It was evident in 10 out of 13 people that was put through that study. That's a 76.9% rate. The third risk factor is called changes in biochemical parameters. Reactive oxygen species, the unstable molecules cause significant cellular damage, leading to diseases such as the degeneration of lipids of enhanced, are enhanced by the RF radiation, which can disrupt cell membranes. Antioxidant enzymes altering the balance of enzymes that neutralize free radicals, overwhelming the body's natural defenses. The list goes on. Hormonal changes, your body literally starts to reconstruct itself internally, which causes a massive risk for health factors. Okay? Are you willing to bypass those serious health risks you're about to put onto the beloved members of our community over a cell tower? A tower that could easily be placed in an area not directly near people, not near Sam Umple, Kimberly Umple, their son Lane, daughter's Michaela and Lauren. That's, that's right. Hear those names because they are people, not just any people. They are loved and appreciated by this community. They're not some random people from out of town coming to visit because of our beautiful nature. Your decision on this project will have damning effects on them and their future. Shall you move forward with this location? Are you willing to put them in harm's way? I would hope not. Is the need for a cell tower more significant than the health and lives of our people? If your answer is anything other than no, or you actually have to contemplate that, then I suggest that you remove yourself from the board, pack up and go somewhere because this town cares for each other. We all back each other up. These are our people and they are our loved ones. So I strongly urge you all to consider the decision you're about to make and question yourself as to what means more to you, a cell tower locate, location, or the people you have to look in the face each day, knowing that you potentially sold their soul for a mere location of a cell tower? A deeply concerned citizen, Ernie Longy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anika Taylor.
Hi, thank you. I have the same list about the health issues. They're extreme. There are many, many different studies. And he didn't mention male fertility, which I think is also very important, which is big on the list. I'm a block away, there's a whole row of houses there. So community health is really important. Also, the property itself, it's right next to the Slye Mountain Wilderness. And if you look on the maps, the Ulster County Parcel Viewer shows exactly where it's going to be built, where the complex is, with all of the machines and everything that's underneath, is habitat core, biological zones and ecological zones. And the environmental resource mapper, maps show significant natural communities with rare plants and animals, with a long list of ones that are at risk and on the list and their presence there and the tower could disrupt that. There's also the issue of property values. There are many ways that this could hurt the full town. When I researched the health issues, it wasn't just for the people who were one block away, it was for the whole community, which surprised me. The other thing I wanted to say is the speed of technology these days is so fast that we're, if we say yes to this huge compound and tower, it may be old technology by the time the building of it and the disruption, all of it has gone up, it may be, it may be defunct by the time it's built. We need something, we all agree on that. And I think as a town, maybe we are smart enough to get our resources together and find ways to do that. I don't think this project is the way. Thank you very much. And I sent the longer list to you, so I'd like to, good, thanks. And the map.
Sparrow.
When you get old, you get conservative. I looked up, how long have human beings been in North America? The answer was at least 23,000 years. For 23,000 years, we've lived without cell towers and somehow we've survived. If a car breaks down on 28, someone helps them. Then they drive home. We all live pretty close and calls the police. I have no idea if microwaves are harmful. I do know that cell towers are ugly. And my understanding is that Verizon is not a social service agency. They have one desire, which is to make a profit. If it turns out that microwaves are harmful, they're not gonna waste their money researching that question. They're gonna let the people pay for the consequences. My friend Phoebe, I'll give her that name, says the tower will hurt tourism because visitors' life being in a place where they can unplug from the outer world. This is the heart of the Catskills. It's not Westchester. There are cellphone boosters on Main Street in Phoenicia. Someone once asked Mahatma Gandhi, what do you think of Western civilization? And he replied, it would be a good idea. Let civilization stay in the cities. The root of the word civilization, civitas, means city. The less civilization here, the better.
Angela Galinda.
Good evening, Angela Galinda. I've been before this board as I think zoning and the town board, explaining how my husband and I have cardiac implanted devices and our little sending units need cell service to connect. That's not the issue. The issue is what's happening here. We're here, a whole bunch of people talking about the health issues. I'm gonna give you a few examples. The exposure levels of the Federal Communications Commission are totally outdated and do not protect the health of the public, especially of children. I urge you to take strong and active steps to reduce exposure to children and staff to excessive levels of radio frequency EMFS within your schools. David O. Carpenter, MD Director, Institute for Health and Environmental University at The National Toxicology Program studies clearly showed that non-ionizing cell funk, radio frequency radiation can cause cancers and other adverse health effects. An important lesson that should be learned is that we cannot assume any current or future wireless technology such as 5G is safe without adequate testing. Ronald Melnick, PhD, 28-year scientist at the National Institutes of Health. Now we have 5G rolling out in massive quantities without due diligence to determine, are these sources of radiation safe, not only for humans, but for wildlife? And the answer is no, they are not. Albert H. Mandeville II, PhD, adjunct professor, John Hopkins University Wildlife Biologist, 17 years retired from the Division of Migratory Bird Management, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We should not wait to protect children's brains. The science is now clear and compelling, indicating that wireless technology is harmful to health, especially to children. Wireless radiation is repeating the history of lead, tobacco and DDT. This is Deborah Davis, PhD, MPH, President of Environmental Health Trust, founding director of the Board of Environmental Studies and Toxicology of the U.S. National Research Council, National Academy of Sciences and a member of the team of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, scientists who were awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in 2007. This is a study by Weldon Salzman, 2016, a field study that monitored over 100 trees for nine years published in the Science of Total Environment, found a high level of damage to trees from nearby cell tower antennas. The damage started on the side of the tree exposed to the higher R. New Hampshire State Commission, 2020 Report, 5G Health and Environment Requires Setbacks of 1,640 Feet for New Wireless Antennas From Residents, Businesses and Schools. And I'm getting a lot of this from the Environmental Health Trust organization. Los Angeles, California School District Office of Health and Safety developed a cautionary level for radio frequency radiation 10 times lower than FCC regulations because it is believed that a more conservative level is necessary to protect children who represent a potentially vulnerable and sensitive population. A 10-year study, my eyes are going, I'm getting old. A 10-year study published in the Science of Total Environment on Cellphone Network Antennas by the Local Municipal Health Department and several universities in Brazil, found a clearly elevated relative risk of cancer mortality at residential distances of 500 meters or less from cellphone towers, and that's dove from 2011. And, one more. This is Feldman and Ben Ishai, 2017. Contrary to claims that the 5G's higher frequencies simply bounce off the skin, researchers have documented that the coiled portion of the skin's sweat duct can be regarded as a helical antenna in the sub THC band and the skin, our largest organ, can intensely absorb the higher 5G frequencies. We're talking about putting a tower that is very close to the home of people we love, people who do a lot for this community. Yes, we need it. Darn it, we need it. We all know we need it, but there's gotta be a better way. Josh Byer just talked. I'm sure there are other places. Please, don't rush into this. The, it's just too dangerous. It's too dangerous at this point. And I have concerns about Verizon itself because, here's a thought, before, when my husband and I moved here, we moved here because my-
Can you, can you wrap it up, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Two seconds. I apologize and thank you so much for indulging me. My father was very, very ill. He had a Life Alert button and he had Time Warner. He had given up his landline. I pleaded with Verizon to put the landline back because when, when Time Warner then went out, when the power went out, he had no way to call for help. Verizon said, no way. And this is a company that says they care. Think about it.
Barbara Mansfield.
No, she was the last one. Shall I invite?
If she's here.
Don't hurt anybody else who didn't sign up.
Yeah.
If anybody didn't sign up to speak, can you sign in though for me so I don't have to guess how to spell your name? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. My name's Jerry Sforza. I'm a full-time resident of Shandaken. I live in Mount Trumper. Two things. There's a lot of information out regarding the health, potential health impacts of micro technology, but I'd like to speak to an experience that I personally had. I always kept my phone in my pocket, like many of us here. And I developed, for years, ever since cell phones came out, I had it in my pocket. Stopped wearing the watch, always used my phone. I developed a, a patch of numbness on my thigh, exactly where my phone was. Doctors didn't say one way or the other, but the suggestion was, well, don't put your phone there. So I stopped carrying my phone on my person. I don't have it on me. Anybody who knows in this room who tries to reach me, very often I don't answer because my phone is either home or sitting in the car. And I'm in the habit now of just checking messages a couple of times a day and then responding at that point. But it took a year. Took a year for it to clear up, for the numbness to disappear. And that's just the phone. We're talking about a tower with a tremendous amount of kilowatts and microwave, I'm not familiar with the technology, but it's clearly a lot more transmitting and receiving power than we're gonna have on our phones. So, word of caution, no one should be carrying their phone on their person, certainly not holding it up to their head when they're having a conversation. That's the first point. Second point is the scenic byway. That's Phoenicia's claim to fame. That's why people come to this area, for the beauty, for the ridge lines, for the bare mountains. To be able to sit in a diner, to sit in the restaurants in downtown Phoenicia and look up at mountains and not see homes, not see towers, not see any signs of civilization, is refreshing for people. That's why they come up here. That's why I moved here and that's why many of us live here, for its beauty. So I urge the board to consider these alternate sites. There's no question we need cellular technology in the region. All of the public servants made very compelling reasons why, and the sooner the better. There's no question about that. The question is the location. I just urge you all to reconsider these other spots and let's do, this is, once it's up, it's permanent. No one's taking that tower down when, when it becomes obsolete. It's gonna be an ugly feature of our town. Let's think about that and consider other sites. Thank you.
I got you. You wanna do it? I can do it. I got it. Go ahead.
Mike Riccadella, Phoenicia. Maybe my question is more for the Verizon, but I know when individually you wanna get an approval, you have to have a map. You have to show exactly where it's gonna be. You have to have an engineer's report. You have to do an environmental impact study. You have to do an environmental impact study. But, you know, like, we're all talking about where this is going to be. I really don't know where it's going to be. I know which mountain it's going to be. But how come they don't take a picture and show you exactly where this site is going to be? The size of it? What's the size of the building? Is it going to be just a tree going up? How high over the trees are they going to be? Do they show from the road? Where are you going to be able to see this thing?
They do, that's...
They have, so they have?
It's all of this.
And they show you the map?
Every question you just asked, yes.
And they show you everything?
Yes. So they have pictures from several locations. They did a balloon test. They flew a red balloon, and they show where the pictures were taken.
Because that should really be shown at this meeting so we could see it. Because we have comments on it, but how could you have a comment if we don't see it? So when they're doing their slides, they should have put that up on the board so we could all see where it's going to be and how it's going to affect the community. That's all.
Thank you.
I know you two.
Hello, Kathy Nolan. I'm speaking tonight as an individual. I am the county representative for the District 22, in which Shandaken is. And I have spoken with the county officials about this project. I think everyone who has spoken here tonight has spoken beautifully and raised really relevant, cogent points. I have some difficulty with the presentation that I heard from Verizon in terms of how they think they qualify in terms of the zoning. The zoning statute, when it talks about having a fall zone, I don't think anticipated and may not accommodate the notion that an engineering solution will show that the tower collapses on itself. I think that language meant you wouldn't... The tower's height would not hit any other structure or cross a boundary line. So I think that that type of comment doesn't fly for me. And the disparagement of satellite coverage, I think, was even worse. I use GPS a lot for geocaching and being out in the woods, and there's no time that I don't have three or more, many times... Most times, many more than three satellites, which is all you need for triangulation. I spoke with the county urging a satellite option, especially for regions like ours, where we do have so much that's a wild forest and doesn't have roads and may not... On those coverage maps, will not be covered by this system. There is the possibility here of leapfrogging the cellular and radio into satellite. If there is no alternative to what seems to be a bad location, then satellite might be worth trying to get. And I think those fire company resources that allow fire companies to buy equipment, that each fire company should buy a satellite phone right now.
They don't work.
They don't work.
Okay, then we got to talk, because they do work for residents who have those services. And so if that can be a solution, then we should use it. If it doesn't work, then it's not. So, you know, I go by the facts, and if you've got better facts, then I'm with you. But the satellite technology is coming in. Some companies are much better than others. It does sound like we need something sooner than a satellite system for everybody could be put in place. You've heard tonight that there's an alternative site that might avoid most of the concerns that have been raised by the nearest neighbors and by the whole community. So I would urge you and urge the county to look at those alternatives, because then maybe you have the win-win. You have a site that people accept, and you have the service that people need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I want to...
Did Barbara Mansfield come though?
No.
No, she's not.
Okay. That's enough of you people.
I want to thank everyone for attempting to keep your comments brief and being respectful of one another. It was very productive. I think we should leave this public hearing open. Would like a motion to do so.
Another is a very well-worded letter that was submitted from Matthew Bundy.
She has letters.
I also have a few letters.
And it should be read?
Yeah, you can read this.
And I'm not sure how many others are there not being read, but they were asked to be read at this meeting.
Three others.
They'll all be read.
In the envelope.
They should be read.
To the Shandaken Planning Board, I respectfully request that this letter will be read aloud at the public hearing on Wednesday, September 10th, regarding the proposed Verizon cell tower off Route 28 in Phoenicia. I am writing in strong opposition to the project. While I support efforts to improve cellular connectivity in rural areas, this proposal raises serious concerns about procedural integrity, environmental impact, residential well-being, and technical feasibility. One, procedural integrity and public trust. The proposal appears to override prior decisions made by other boards and dismisses substantial public opposition. Changing local laws or zoning allowances to accommodate a single project, especially one with significant community resistance, undermines democratic process and erodes public trust and local governance. Two, technical feasibility and site selection. From a telecommunications engineering standpoint, placing a tower in a valley is suboptimal. Cell signals rely on line-of-sight propagation and elevated terrain, such as nearby mountain tops, offer significantly better coverage with fewer obstructions. A tower on higher ground would serve a broader area, reduce shadow zones, and potentially eliminate the need for additional infrastructure. The current proposal ignores this logic and risks inefficient service delivery while maximizing residential disruption. Three, environmental and aesthetic impact. A 175-foot tower extendable to 199 feet with a lightning rod will dramatically alter the visual and ecological character of Phoenicia. This region is defined by its natural beauty and environmental sensitivity. The proposed site risks disrupting wildlife corridors, increasing light pollution, and degrading the scenic value that sustains both tourism and local identity. Four, residential impacts and property values. Numerous studies have shown that proximity to large cell towers can negatively affect property values. Residents near the proposed site have expressed legitimate concerns about their children's safety, long-term health implications, and the psychological toll of living under industrial infrastructure. These concerns are not speculative. They are grounded in precedent and deserve serious consideration. Five, precedent and community rights. If this project proceeds despite widespread opposition and technical shortcomings, it sets a precedent that corporate interests can override community welfare. Today, it is Phoenicia; tomorrow, it could be any other neighborhood. Development must serve the public good, not bypass it. I urge the planning board to reject this proposal or at a minimum require a full environmental review and independent topographical feasibility study. Respectfully, Matthew Bundy. Then there's one more part. I may want to add this to my letter. I did some extensive research. Alternate tower locations to consider. One, Mount Tremper overlook near Route 28. Elevated terrain with line of sight to Phoenicia and parts of Woodland Valley could serve both Route 28 travelers and nearby hamlets. May require directional antennas to reach deeper into valleys. Two, Woodland Valley Road entrance near New York State DEC campground. A lower elevation option but close to where signal drops off could provide localized coverage for hikers, campers, and residents, especially useful during emergencies or seasonal surges in visitors. Three, high ridge near Lane Street in Chichester offers elevation without deep forest obstruction. Could blanket Chichester and parts of Route 214 with signal. Less traffic than Route 28, but critical for resident safety. Technical considerations. Terrain in Shandaken is notoriously signal-blocking, so elevation and antenna orientation are key. A multi-site microcell strategy might be more effective than one large tower. Providers should conduct a radio frequency propagation study to model coverage zones. Again, Matthew Bundy. Another one. To the planning board, I am unable to attend the meeting tomorrow on September 10th, 2025. I received your letter informing me of the meeting. When I first received the letter, first telling me of the proposal of the tower, I wrote back to you and indicated my support for the tower. I saw the map and thought it would be a good place for it. Since then, I learned that a couple people I know... One, a friend of mine, said the proposed placement of the tower is close to his house. He said if the proposed extra emergency height is added, if it fell for some reason, it would be close enough to fall on his property. For this reason, I am against extending the tower from 178 to 195 feet. If, however, a new site was established, I would be for the proposal and for the erection of the tower that our town needs. Thank you for asking me. Sincerely, Alan Flekel.
To the Town of Shandaken Planning Board, from Hillary Smith, regarding the public hearing, 9:10, 25. Procedural comments. The board is not in a position to make any decisions this evening and should cancel the public hearing for the following reasons. Telecommunication facilities are not in allowable use in the Hamlet Residential Zoning District per the Table of Use Regulations 116-10. The public hearing notice was published on September 4th, 2025. This is not 10 days prior. The planning board has not received the required referral report from the Ulster County Planning Board. Revised secret documentation has not been provided to reflect the change application. The previously submitted visual impact analysis materials were prepared for a monopole design with flush-mounted antennas. The new configuration is for a wider lattice structure and an assortment of protruding antennas. A revised visual impact analysis should be included additional to viewpoints to address concerns from specific property or business locations. Simulation should address the substantial tree clearing that is required to access the site. The VIA should comply with Town of Shandaken zoning 116-62 and other applicable resources. Secret comments. A positive declaration and an EIS are required when the action may include the potential for at least one significant adverse environmental impact. Additional care and scrutiny of visual and aesthetic impacts is necessary given the site's prominent location within the Catskill Park, adjacent to a designated scenic byway that is the access corridor to many scenic recreation destinations at the gateway to the Hamlet of Phoenicia and the expected visibility along the Asopus Creek, a historic fly-fishing destination. The planning board, at a minimum, should be adhering to the standards set by New York State DEC for referencing, assessing, and mitigating visual and aesthetic impacts. Common sense says that the proposed action, especially with the increased bulk over the previously proposed monopole, has the potential for significant adverse visual, aesthetic, and community character impacts. The planning board should issue a positive declaration for this project and incorporate relevant public comments and questions into the EIS scoping document. Of particular importance in the preparation of an EIS is the requirement for the consideration of alternatives. This can be alternative designs, configurations, or locations. To determine that an EIS will not require... Be required for an action, the board must determine either that there will be no adverse environmental impacts or that the identified adverse environmental impacts will not be significant. There is not enough material in the record. Support this.
To the Town of Shandaken Planning Board, I am sending this letter to address the Verizon application on the agenda for 9:10, 2025. As I see it, after Monday night's town board meeting on the amendment was tabled, leaving this application back to square one on needing a variance being too close to our property. I handed in over 280 signatures on my petition for the site on my neighbor's property, and due to the public turnout and strong negativity towards this site, there are two other available sites proposed. We understand that emergency services are already looking into one proposed site. I ask that this application be denied because it does not comply with the existing zoning laws in effect. Therefore, this site does not work for us or the public. Respectfully submitted, the Umhey family.
I think we should leave this public hearing open. Need a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to take 10 minutes. You guys don't have to. Just so you know. I got to call my secretary.
Okay, we're moving on to the regular meeting now. First up is... Sorry. Paul, it'll be you. Give everybody a minute to... We'll give everybody a minute to move out. Excuse me, we still have a meeting going on. Please take the conversation outside. The public hearing. That was the public hearing. We're moving into the regular meeting now. Pardon? So this one's simple. We can continue.
All right, please move outside if you're talking.
Guys, come on, please. Be respectful. All right. You guys... You guys have any more questions for Paul about this project?
No questions.
Guys, come on! Thank you. So... You guys have any more questions on Paul's project to convert his garage into an ADU?
No.
No?
Okay. Then I think I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Clifford Buffo?
Yes.
Joanne Kelb?
Yes.
Alan Shiner? Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Juan Rosales?
Yes.
Chandra Valenti?
All done?
All done.
Thank you.
Well, come on up.
This is for the subdivision of the Hamlet's property?
No questions here?
Yeah. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Clifford Buffo?
Yes.
Joanne Kelb?
Yes.
Alan Shiner? Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Juan Rosales?
Yes.
Chandra Valenti?
Okay. Everybody left?
Did that?
Here he is.
Sorry, I'm next.
It's okay. You're up next. Do... It seemed like you might be interested in that alternate site?
Oh, my interest doesn't matter. I just want to get it. We've got the contact information because I'm a engineer.
Sure.
So my interest... We will make contact.
Okay.
And our engineer will look at it. It's up to him, basically, to see if it works or doesn't work.
Okay.
Okay.
We always look at alternatives.
Oh, is there only one proposed alternate site? I thought that-
There's only...
Well, there's another one that I think...
It was not-
That had water tank properties, and I think Mr. Umhey mentioned that last.
The one... That was the one with the covenants?
That's got the covenants, yeah. Legally can't use them.
The one that Judge Byer changed, I think, is the viable one. Potentially viable.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll withdraw that. We're going to withdraw that covenants.
Not everybody has them. One person has it.
I've talked to a couple of everybody there, and they're most of them.
Anyway.
So you're working on the maps. In the meantime, you're going to speak to your engineer about this alternate site?
Yes. So what I'm going to try to get to you is, like I said, we're doing a sweep because of the extensive switchback, basically, more or less. So I'm going to try to get the design- responding to some of the comments, so that you can have that for your record also.
I know I wasn't here. Did we discuss the balancing test?
No.
Okay, so just to reiterate, for this board...
Just, you didn't lose anything.
Okay. Just to reiterate, for this board at least, we did speak with Ben Galey and he felt that the town board would be best to deal with that balancing. Just to reiterate, I know we've talked about it.
Yeah, I think we had that conversation last time and I think so, we wanted the public hearing to be...
Yeah, no, no, no. I just want it clear to the...
The town board is gonna have to take that up.
Forward and clear to the public as well.
Sorry.
Just so procedurally, everybody understands where we are.
So let's be clear, we're talking about the public use option that the county's talking about, that that's what we said we wanna go in front of the town board. The additional bit on top of the Verizon tower, that's the part we're talking about.
Rochester versus Marok.
Correct. Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. Take care.
Perpetual, we don't have anyone from Leeway here, correct?
No, that's...
Oh.
Oh, hi, sorry, couldn't hear you.
No worries. No one we recognized, I should have said, I guess.
I used to do cell tower work. I'm very happy I don't anymore.
Good morning!
I'll start with that. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Charles Gottlieb. I'm the Lady Use Counsel for Perpetual Space LLC. I'm from the law firm of Whitman, Osterman, and Hanna in Albany, New York. I'm here this evening with Alan Demoss, our project engineer, Josh Pulver, one of our project consultants. Again, Perpetual Space, I think it's been a while. I know I'm a new face to this board. My firm has just recently retained to help shepherd this through the planning process and come to some resolution here. But to refresh your recollection, the project site is at 5191 Route 28. We're seeking an amended site plan approval and special use permit for the Leeway Hotel. The Leeway Hotel is an existing hotel use that I believe has been there for decades. It's permitted. It is a conforming use. The applicant, Perpetual Space, wants to put a temporary event tent as an accessory use to the hotel use there. The property is in the R1.5 zoning district, which permits hotels, motels, lodges, and accessory uses. It seems like, I went through all the history here. I've been talking with our co-counsel, Mike Moriello. It seems like we've addressed all the issues. So we're here this evening to see how we can work towards the finish line on this. The way I look at it is kind of, what could the conditions of the approvals be to address concerns that we heard from the residents, concerns I think I read about that the planning board may have? And I think we can work with the town on, you know, coming to terms with some of those conditions. Um, let's see. You know, I just wanna highlight again some of the things that are in the record that I saw to refresh your recollection on what the project is. So it's an accessory event tent that's gonna be used in conjunction with the permitted hotel use. It is going to come up before events and it's gonna come down after events. In fact, per the definition of structure in your zoning code, this tent is not even a structure. It is a temporary event tent that will be used literally times during the year. So it's proposed to have 75 people maximum for per event. There would be a maximum of 13 events per year. Again, the tent is taken down, um, and it comes up before events, taken down after events. Leeway staff will be there at all times. The applicant is proposed to give the town, police department, fire department, and neighbors a three-month notice before any events occur. Uh, one of the important details of that is mainly for police and fire and EMS, three months to evaluate, okay, how many people are gonna come? I know it's 75 people max, but 75 people might not always be there. What type of traffic management plan do we need to set in place? Uh, and all that can be done through conditions of the approval. Water is going to be provided from the potable water service that the hotel utilizes. There will be portable toilets that will come onsite and then offsite for the events. Uh, the applicant has proposed seven noise monitors around the perimeter of the project site that are on the site plans. Now, that's important because your code has performance standards. Within those performance standards, there's a noise order, ordinance, and I believe it's from 7pm to 7am. You can't go above 53 dBAs. So those noise monitors will be able to record what the noise is at the property lines to make sure that the events are in compliance. Events are gonna always end at 11pm. The music is gonna shut off at 10:30pm. That allows a half hour for, I think we all know weddings, when the music stops, does take a couple, like we just saw at the meeting, takes a couple minutes for people to leave the event. But everything will be shut down at 11pm. Uh, the events will be serviced by licensed and permitted caterers. There was a flood evacuation plan that was provided to this planning board, which following that procedure and that flood evacuation plan would be a condition of any approval. Uh, let's see, and just to remind you what actually is occurring, because it's quite shocking that this has taken a year, because there's no ground disturbance proposed. So they're placing the accessory event tent that is temporary in nature. They're improving and repairing an existing gravel driveway. They're demarcating parking spaces on a grass parking area. There are no permanent structures provided, and there's no ground disturbance with this application.
This, this board doesn't consider a use temporary that's recurring like that. So even though you're saying it's a tent that comes up and comes down, it's gotta come up and down, come up and down, come up and down.
Sure, I'm just, this board might not, but your zoning code doesn't even identify it as a permanent structure. Um, so a little, you know, I went through the notes, I went through the meeting minutes, I went through letters that some of those opposed to the project went through. Um, and I just wanna hit a few high points for this board. Uh, one, again, this existing hotel is permitted. Now, the existing hotel, as you can see from the site plans, it doesn't meet the existing area and bulk regulations, the side yard setback namely. But the use is permitted. So per zoning code 116-59, because it's a structural nonconformity, the property owner can expand, it can construct, it can do anything within the parameters of the zoning code, so long as it doesn't increase one of those existing nonconformities. And here it doesn't. The event tents, the parking areas all meet the setback requirements. Um, one issue that's come up, and recently went to the zoning board of appeals, per I believe your, your direction, was is this an accessory use? Now, an accessory use, if it's incidental and customary to the principal use, which is a hotel, is permitted by your code. Now, there's a lot of case law on whether events and weddings are a permitted accessory use to a lodging facility or a hospital use. One case that's very notable is against the Town of Olive, where the court, the Third Department, did hold that weddings are accessory to lodging facilities, to hospitality facilities. And what that court noted was, let's look at other places within the town. Do other hospitality uses, are they allowed to have weddings? And they were, in the very same zoning district that that application was in. We have the exact same facts here. And that's what we presented to the ZBA. So other hospitality uses in the Town of Shandaken that have weddings that are operating conceivably without permits or didn't go before this board are Full Moon, the Emerson, Foxfire, and Urban Cowboy. This applicant chose to come to this board to do it the right way. Let's go to the planning board, let's go through site plan review, let's check conditions, make sure everyone's satisfied. Um, and quite honestly, now, it's a year later, and weddings are coming up in October potentially, and they might lose revenue because they went through the proper procedures. Um, and there's just kind of a hint of unfairness there. Again, the events and weddings are gonna be done in conjunction with the hotel use. The prior precedent within the town shows that this is a customary accessory use to a lodging facility. The temporary and seasonal nature and limited amounts per year that this, weddings are gonna be held, shows that it's incidental to the principal use, which principal use is a full year-round operation. Um, and it feels as though there's a little bit of selective enforcement. Again, there's other facilities, similar facilities that are having weddings, they're advertising them on their websites that are bigger facilities and appear to be bigger wedding venues. Um, but yet, we're the ones that are here for the board.
I have to just cut you off right there for a second.
Sure.
Where, um, I understand what you're saying. This board is not enforcement. We only review what comes before us. I'm not denying your point, but that's...
Sure, understood. That's a very well-taken point. And, and I'm just trying to convey that there is a prior precedent in this town that accessory uses to a hotel include weddings and event things. We did go before the ZBA. Um, as we expected, the ZBA did not have jurisdiction to hear our appeal. Uh, they sent us back to the planning board. Um, because we are so clearly an accessory use, there really is no interpretation of code here to be had. Um, so what we wanna do is work with the board, come to a resolution on what the conditions of any approval might look like, um, that are reasonable and related to potential impacts. Um, I also found it interesting, it looks like this board did start the secret process, um, but it's also very clear that this is a type-two action under secret. Anytime you have an accessory, non-residential use that's under 4,000 square feet of floor area, that's a type-two action, and the municipality is not permitted to go through the secret process. That said, I know one was started early on in this process, and I think the board learned a lot of important information through that process that we can use.
Go ahead.
You, this board determined this to be a type-two action, and Mike Moriello asked them to change that to enlisted. That's how that went.
Well, regardless of how we got there, again...
Well, that's how we got, frankly, that's how we got there.
I'll give my...
If you want clarity.
Um, but it is type-two, so I just wanted to confirm that. But again, the, the, the process of going through that secret, if there's a habitat study in the record, there's all of this stuff in the record that just supports the record to approve the project. So we're here to answer any questions. We're back in the planning board's court. There are potential events scheduled in October. We really would like to get out of here with an approval. Um, and, but anything we can do to answer any questions would be great.
Hank?
Yes?
Do you receive our letter?
I did receive your letter. Did you receive my letter?
Was it, was it after the last one?
Yes.
Are you guys going to, uh, speak on that at this meeting?
We will speak on it, but did you review the letter that was put in your focus today?
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 Today, yesterday.
Uh, zoning.
Yeah, I know I haven't seen any letters.
I have no idea. Did you put letters in your file from Hank?
Which, I did for, for Quin. He had asked me to show him a letter.
Maybe it's under the main page.
I can see the one about Verizon.
Do you have, do you have a copy of it by chance, Hank?
I have a copy upstairs.
He emailed today.
He asked me to share one with him.
You shared that with, you might have it in your email. When was that?
Today.
From today, from Olivia.
Or yesterday. Yesterday, I'm sorry. Yesterday.
I have nothing.
You sent it?
Just a clip. Apparently Hank asked her to share with a clip.
All right, here we are. Uh, they just went, this came to me. You guys don't have them.
Oh.
That's why. Is there something I should be reading at this time?
No.
No, he's got it.
I got it on my phone.
Don't look, he's got it on this one. Well, the easier one is that.
This is old.
Yeah.
Please review my previous letter?
Yes.
This one?
Yes, I have a copy of that.
Do you want me to read it?
No, shit.
I don't know.
This is the previous letter, if you'd like me to read it.
Yeah, please, please read it, I'm not...
Dear Chairman Rebuffo and Planning Board members, the zoning board of appeals cannot hear an interpretation case if it has not been formally requested by the applicant, town board, planning board, or if there is not an existing appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's decisions, decision not to initiate our own interpretations or hear requests from other boards. The ZBA's primary function in interpretation cases is to act as an appellate body, reviewing an interpretation or decision made by our zoning administrators. In closing, since there is no pending appeal from our zoning enforcement officer's decision regarding this application for interpretation to be reviewed, the ZBA cannot hear this matter. Respectfully submitted, Henry Williams. After this, you received the request from the planning board.
Right.
So your response to that request is?
I have a formal request.
Which is?
Which is?
Please make it.
Please review my...
Which is, please review my previous letter.
So you, you wanted a formal request. We provided you a formal request, and you're saying?
Formal request. Basically, what my letter says is that you have to compel this zoning enforcement officer to make a decision. By lack of a non-decision, that will give you a basis to appeal to us for an interpretation.
I, I don't know.
What?
I don't know.
That's what I'd say.
Frankly. I don't know.
Well, I can tell you, 'cause I haven't seen those letters, so I would like to see them, but there's nothing to interpret, right? We have a hotel. We have a case directly on point where the Town of Olive ZBA was overturned by not allowing weddings for a hospitality use, because weddings are accessory to that use. We have precedent in this very own town that hotels are operating as, with wedding venues. Um, quite frankly, that would add months and months and months onto this already year-long process when there quite literally is nothing to interpret. It's all very clear.
It's not clear.
It's not, there's nothing clear.
Okay, no, no, no.
Our lawyer doesn't find it clear. We don't, I think it's important to correct that.
You guys, you guys have had, had your chance, please.
A motel. These don't, but these people get to come before you and speak for as many moments as they want, every time they come, but we...
You, you've had a lot of time, everyone's had a lot of time to speak to this one for a very long time.
Well, so have the... Not fair.
There's not a hotel. Never been a hotel. Ever. Ever.
It's a motel, and you will find it much more difficult to find precedent for a motel with an accessory use than if it's...
So the zoning code permits hotels, motels, and lodging facilities.
You're not getting...
Case law tells us that weddings are accessory to hotels, motels, and lodging facilities.
There are seven people, 14 people maximum in a motel.
Let, please.
There are 75.
Hank, excuse, excuse me.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
But it's not fair.
All right.
That decision in Olive was challenged, also, there's no more weddings in Olive in that case. It was challenged and put down. That's clear.
Not according to the Third Department of the New York State Supreme Court.
It's closed.
Are they having weddings there now?
No.
That I don't know, but that is, um, that, that, whether or not it's having weddings now doesn't change the law that the court decided when that case happened. I cited that case in my planning board letter dated August 26th. Let's see. And the case was from 2018. The court held, in determining that hosting weddings as an accessory use to the operation of a bed and breakfast, the ZBA relied in part on wedding services offered by another bed and breakfast located in that same zoning district. Now, New York town law, I think it's 274, says that a town cannot treat a single property owner within the same zoning district differently than it treats all the other property owners in that same zoning district. If there's an adverse decision on this application, you're treating the Leeway different than you're treating the other hospitality uses in this town.
I'm sorry, but frankly, is this not why this was referred to the DBA to begin with? This board isn't allowed to interpret code. This is not their responsibility, and it's not something they can do, which is why they asked the ZBA for that interpretation, and that's being held up.
So there are certain cases, and I can provide this case law to this board, where a planning board on something as clear as this doesn't have to go to the building inspector, doesn't have to go to the ZBA. There is a threshold of when an interpretation is beyond the planning board power. I'm happy to provide that information for you. I did call Mr. Galey. I worked with him quite often to see if he had been engaged in this matter.
It was challenged and put down. That's clear.
Not according to the Third Department of the New York State Supreme Court.
It's closed.
Are they having weddings there now?
No.
That I don't know, but that is, that, that, whether or not it's having weddings now doesn't change the law that the court decided when that case happened. I cited that case in my planning board letter dated August 26th. Let's see. And the case was from 2018, where the court held, in determining that hosting weddings as an accessory use to the operation of a bed and breakfast, the ZBA relied in part on wedding services offered by another bed and breakfast located in that same zoning district. Now, New York town law, I think it's 274, says that a town cannot treat a single property owner within the same zoning district differently than it treats all the other property owners in that same zoning district. If there's an adverse decision on this application, you're treating the Leeway different than you're treating the other hospitality uses in this town.
I'm sorry, but frankly, is this not why this was referred to the DBA to begin with? This board isn't allowed to interpret code. This is not their responsibility, and it's not something they can do, which is why they asked the ZBA for that interpretation, and that's being held up.
So there are certain cases, and I can provide this case law to this board, where a planning board on something as clear as this doesn't have to go to the building inspector, doesn't have to go to the ZBA. There is a threshold of when an interpretation is beyond the planning board power. I'm happy to provide that information for you. I did call Mr. Gailey. I worked with him quite often to see if he had been engaged in this matter. He said he had not yet been engaged in this matter.
That is not the case. We have discussed this with Ben Gailey.
Well, I'm happy to work that case law out with him again. I've worked with him on several different matters throughout the state.
Which would have been a part of the minutes that you repeat, actually, a letter that Cliff wrote following a conversation with Mr. Gailey.
I spoke to him last week.
This was a month ago? Two months ago?
Yeah, it was, it was before that.
It was before, it was before we referred...
That is the next phone call.
It was before we referred to the ZBA.
For clarity's sake, Hank, you're saying on behalf of the ZBA that you will not see this application for interpretation from the planning board?
That's what he's saying.
Period.
I'm asking, yes, I need to know.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes. For clarity's sake, Hank, are you saying that the ZBA will not see this case for interpretation as referred by the planning board?
As referred, the way they refer it.
The formal request that you asked for, yes.
They can refer one to us, but they have to try and compel the ZEO first to make a decision, and based on a non-decision, then that will give them a basis for, to appeal to the ZBA for an interpretation.
And I would tend to agree with you, except for your board set a precedent when you refused to see Wellington until it was referred by the planning board. And so these applicants come to you straight from the planning board all the time for commercial development, all the time.
Listen.
I'm listening, I always am.
This instant case, this is what's gonna happen.
This is what's gonna, this, this can't be case by case. Your board told me that you would not take applications for variance from me, let me speak, as it pertains to use variances for commercial development unless they came directly from the planning board. That's in minutes that you've accepted. I can't know case by case what you're, what you're gonna change your mind.
Listen, we have a lot of cases in front of us, and I don't know exactly what you're talking about.
I can send you the minutes.
What I'm saying to you right now, based on this instant case of the Leeway and, and the ZBA being asked for an interpretation is not gonna happen unless somebody is agreeing. The planning board asked, asked Mike Moriello and Leeway to go to the ZBA and request...
Yes.
An interpretation.
Yes.
But he didn't want to request an interpretation. He said he doesn't want an interpretation because the ZBO hasn't made a decision yet.
Right.
So there's no basis to him to ask us for an interpretation.
I understand.
We have no right here.
I understand that, and following that presentation from Mr. Moriello, you said that you were looking for a formal request from the planning board for interpretation, which you've been...
Yeah, I want a formal request, but...
Which you've been provided.
To get a formal request...
This is not the right place for this. I'm sorry, but we need to have some sort of a meeting outside of this.
Why can't the planning board compel you to make a decision?
The planning board cannot compel me to do anything.
Why can't you make a decision?
The planning board could not compel me to do anything.
Why can't you, as the zoning enforcement officer, make a decision?
Because your board set the precedent that I'm not allowed to make those decisions, Hank, and frankly, that's why. I have the minutes that you approved stating that.
Then tell the planning board that you will not make a decision, and then they can put together a...
The planning board has been informed that a decision wasn't made. This is completely inappropriate. I can't, I'm not...
Yeah, I think this whole conversation being on the record absolutely shows the arbitrary nature that this matter is being handled. I am telling you confidently that this board, because this is a crystal-clear item, this board can make, can proceed with this. I can show you the cases that relate to that. It doesn't appear as this internal conflict within the town is gonna get resolved, nor should the applicant be punished and a loss of potential revenue from its business be lost because of this arbitrary process that we're stocking.
I'm trying to remember.
There's no internal conflict here. We just, the ZBA wants it done the correct way so there's no issues in the future. That's all. We don't have a conflict.
I'm trying to remember the past discussions with regard to the floodway and the floodplain. Because while, for argument's sake, we can say that it is a permitted use and that it's the bulk that's not conforming and the setback that's not conforming, for argument's sake, we can say it's an accessory use. My understanding was, this, the Leeway as it stands today would not be approved because of where it exists in terms of floodway and floodplain.
That's not necessarily...
That's not, my memory's wrong there. So where does the floodway start? Floodway starts closer to, I know, closer to the creek, but it's, I thought it overlapped part of where they want to do this event.
So if you look on the site plan...
I don't have it.
The county, the county, the county and the comments asked us to put the floodway line on the site plan, and the building, the three main buildings are outside of the floodway. This building in the back, which is a bathroom area, that's not being used at all, that's within the floodway.
Can we see that up here, please?
Yes. On the site, there is your floodway line, which is true. There's your floodplain.
So that, my, my understanding is that the parking area for events would be in the floodway?
Which is why they submitted, the applicant submitted a...
Evacuation plan.
Go to the next page, which might be... So the event is down in the floodway.
Okay, so the event area is in the floodway. That part of my memory was correct.
Which is why they did the evacuation plan, the commitment to basically set up...
I noticed. December of last year.
So the evacuation plan is a mitigation of something that we would not normally approve. And we do not necessarily have to accept an evacuation plan. It's a mitigation, but it's, it's, it's basically saying, yeah, you're right, we're putting this in, in a floodway.
That's right. They're not gonna make it in the floodway, that was...
They're putting people in a floodway, who are drinking alcohol...
There's no habitable structures within the floodway.
The water would...
There's enough that's happened in the news with people in temporary locations that got hurt.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Please, no, no yelling from this audience, please.
Every building's been flooded on that problem. Left and right. Oh, I'm sorry. That's not good information.
I'm good.
I didn't hear what you were commenting on.
I'm good.
About the flood, about the floodway, just what you were saying about the tent being in the floodway.
Okay.
What about the rise certificate?
Oh, dear God.
With that. So on, on the planning board, what about the rise certificate?
They're not building in the floodway, so they wouldn't need a rise.
The tents and the carrooms in the floodway, therefore, Donna Lomorn, the floodplain administrator, told me those two things were required.
Did Donna ask for a no-rise? I don't recall that.
Pardon?
Did Donna ask for a no-rise?
Yes.
She said it may be, off the top of my head, she, you need to invite Donna to a meeting, and she can, she can share what she thinks herself.
She said she had to look into it, I thought. She said it was required.
Again. Invite Donna to a meeting.
I'm not familiar with an instance where anything other than a permanent structure required that certificate and a no-rise calculation.
We've never had a tent in a floodway before.
Or a forty-car.
We have to clear up that with our floodplain administrator, who is not here tonight.
Okay.
Sounds like we also need to call Ben.
I would encourage that.
Yeah. A lot of the other stuff we requested, you guys took care of, the noise, the noise sensors, you reduced your occupancy, you sourced parking. What about lighting? That was another question we had.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we're showing lighting around, to be honest with you, I can't compare to the, we're also...
Sure.
I think we're showing lighting around... Yeah, with the temporary demarcations, I don't have a specific answer at this point to be told.
We'll get you information on the lighting.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, we'll put that next to you, please. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I think that's it for us. I missed a lot, if that's where...
Okay. And so what I might do with our next submission is propose conditions of approval that the applicant acquiesces to, that, from what I've read from the record, address a lot of the concerns from the public and the planning board and so forth. I'll also provide you with some cases that show instances where the planning board doesn't always have to go to either the code enforcement officer or the zoning board for interpretation. See if we can make some headway on that. Certainly internally to the town, if a decision is made, let us know. When is your next planning board meeting?
They have a workshop the last Wednesday of this month.
Yeah.
The part, the part that I'm struggling with...
You could come to with that information.
The part that I'm struggling with is, this is special use permit?
Yes.
So, 116-39. G refers to, it has to be compatible with the neighborhood, with, and it says with particular emphasis on the immediate neighborhood. This does not seem compatible with the immediate neighborhood. It's been, it's been said by the people who live there. So I'm struggling with how to say this is acceptable under that 116-39. G with regard to a special use permit needs to be compatible use with the area, with particular emphasis on the immediate locale.
What I'll say is, we can also, sometimes like to provide a site plan, a special use permit narrative demonstrating how we meet the various factors, but I will say, and lawyers do this best, right, if you recite cases, the fact that a use is identified as a specially permitted use in that zoning district is tantamount to a legislative finding that it is consistent with the community character. That was a decision that the town board made when they enacted the zoning code. As long as we meet, you know, the zoning specifications, it's compatible. But, that said, we will go through the record and with mitigation, we'll show you how we can tailor the events to ensure that we are compatible and not having any adverse effects.
I have the same issue as Sam does with the community impact and the fact that it is clearly set out in the zoning code that this is a factor to be considered in approving a special use permit. I do not see how any mitigating circumstances that the applicant puts forward can change that fact, because there is nothing that you're proposing that I can see, since this is all related to mitigating the actual operation of this venue, that would not, would lower the impact sufficiently to not adversely impact the community. The more that you discuss these potential changes in the operation of the venue, which the way I see it, are not enforceable by the town. For in other words, if you promise to limit the number of people, you promise to limit the hours, you promise to limit the amount of noise, you promise to limit the lighting, you promise to take all the cars out of the floodway in impending weather, none of this is enforceable by the town. Once we offer a permit, once we are actually permitting this use, we cannot enforce that the applicant actually then abides by these.
Well, a couple of things. One is, if those are conditions of the approval, that absolutely gives your town enforcement powers. So if we have a condition of the approval that says we can't go over 75 people, and the 76th pulls his car in, we can get a notice of violation. If we need porter potties to handle the waste, and the building department notices there's an event, but there's no porter potties, that's a violation of the site plan, they can issue a violation. There are also other mechanisms that, that we can offer up as far as conditions of approval. I've been through this with many, to a greater extent, RV parks that we represent in the Catskills, where there is this worry of can the town do this enforcement? Through your special use permit powers, which is this, there is the ability to do, you know, after a year of operation or after a year of events, mandate a meeting with the town, come in, meet with the town, how's it working? How were your events? What did you see the problems were with your events? And then you have the ability to go back for the planning board and add mitigation, subtract mitigation, however it may be.
And we have done that, and that is actually a good provision for a comeback in a year.
So I just, I flipped back through my notes here, and this is the meeting from June 11th. This is just shorthand, I don't have everything that was said, but under our floodplain administrator, Donna, concerned about floodway, wants a no-rise certificate, and she said no development within the floodway. I did not hear back from her on that. I don't know if you guys perceived that, but that was June 11th.
Okay, I'll touch base with our consultants. Nobody wants an attorney talking about flooding, flooding, so we'll have a few more technical folks handle that.
I, I also, the three months that you mentioned, three months, because I know people plan weddings at that far in advance or more, I don't think that it's practical to assume that you would be able to give advance notice of an impending flood so that they could change their plans on such short notice.
So we are...
We don't know that floods are coming. At times, we go to bed and we wake up in the middle of a flood. You have to realize that we have a special flood situation here in Shandae.
Sure, and I've, I've dealt with this a lot with development in the town of Gardner, and the flood evacuation plan actually follows a lot of other flood evacuation plans I see in Ulster County, where you're monitoring the United States governmental web services that show the rise at different points here would be the Osposas River, so you do have that advanced warning. You know, people unfortunately wake up to a flood, but that's not because, that's because they don't have an event that they have to monitor the weather for. And all that would be conditions of the approval, and, you know, that's not to say that, that there's not a flash flood that happens in the blink of the eye, right? But we can't, we can mitigate and plan for that as much as possible, but we can't deny development rights and property rights because of something that may, that's unforeseen may happen.
I, I think that, I think we can.
Yeah. So what we'll do is, we'll take a look at the flood evacuation report and that data that the Leeway is required to monitor, and see, you know, with some expert input, at what times do you have to check that United States Weather Service data and river level data prior to an event happening?
See, the more you bring up potential mitigations, which I appreciate you doing because it means that you've been thorough in considering all these factors, and partly because the neighbors have brought all these factors to our attention. There are so many variables, there's so many uncertainties, there's so many things that could actually not work in the plan, that they just, to me, add up to a non-workable plan. I'm sorry, that's, that's the way I'm seeing it, even though you're doing your best to offer solutions.
Sure, and what I will say, and trust me, I'm gonna get crucified by the people behind me for saying this, there has been a lot of testimony from the neighbors and the opposition, there's been a letter from an attorney. I will say, the stuff in that letter was fundamentally and legally wrong. There has been no expert testimony to contradict what our experts, what the applicants have said, what the town consultants have advised. So without a true foundational evidence to show that our mitigation isn't gonna work or that there is a threat that doesn't make this project work, a denial on those grounds, you know, would very likely be reversible.
It just would be considered in our zoning law.
This project is...
As, as Sam has pointed out.
Sure, and I'm gonna provide a narrative and hopefully give you guys the, the support you need to realize the path forward as we see it.
You're talking to a town supervisor that survived three major floods, or is ten year in this office, losing 17 bridges in one of those floods. I'm an expert at floods. I am an expert at floods in Shandae. You don't know what's gonna happen the night before or months before. I had a guest here from Washington, the state of Washington, saw that water come up so fast. He said, what do we do? Do we have to go upstairs? I said, no, you're in the boys' still flats here, the water's gonna be over. Just stay on the porch and watch it. Trees came down, propane tanks came down, trailers came down, cars came down, the lazy mode, this hotel, motel, got flooded. The water went right up into the offices. This is what you're talking about. You're getting a wonderful sales pitch here tonight. You're being sold. You're getting a sales pitch, and I'm telling you, as an expert in Shandae, that baby down there floods and it floods quick, and people could die. down there flooded, it floods quick, and people could die.
I think that this is a very good point. This is a very good point that he's making, and the applicant for whom you're speaking should actually think about the potential liability that they incur by stating, by proposing such a project and putting people's lives in danger.
Can I just say? I'm sorry, Vivian.
I completely disagree with you. You are putting your own personal, like, concerns on the back of this business. Dan, are you?
It's not a personal concern. It's my observation of what is at, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This idea that as much as you mitigate, there might be variables that you can't account for them, and that's an excuse for doing absolutely nothing at all. Like, it just, it doesn't make any sense.
But nothing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Please. The leeway, for right or wrong, has been here many times, as have the individuals we are, talking about their concerns. I've had a lot of sort of frustration listening to this debate, because I hear the leeway trying to find solutions to problems. And what I have not heard from the other side is anything other than we are opposed to this, which I can appreciate. I can, I hear your concerns. I hear your concerns. Sir, I do not.
Let him speak.
I also don't like this whole idea of just shouting at this board meeting.
Well, it's too bad we weren't given a chance to speak.
Ma'am, I have been on this board since March. You have spoken at almost every meeting I've been at.
So have the leeway.
Both public and the workshops. So please don't lecture me about you not having a chance to speak. That's ridiculous.
We're totally be quiet.
Every time they come, they get to talk.
You have had public hearings on this, and you've been speaking from the audience since the beginning of this process.
Not quite. Only when we're not allowed to speak. That's correct, I am. Because it's a danger to not allow you to speak.
And you continue to do it. You continue to put on the board.
Okay, well somehow, you don't look like you're solving a problem right now.
Can Block Bond, please continue.
Which is part of what I'm trying to make another point for. There is no solution unless we are acquiescing to concerns. I just, I have a real issue with, when this, and I'm not saying anyone else, and I'm not specifically mentioning you, but like, they have liability insurance. They obviously are concerned about their residents and guests. Like, the idea that they aren't is just, to me, not something this board can inject or suggest upon the applicant. That's all I'm saying.
I think that, can I respond to what you're saying? I think that when I'm saying that liability is an issue, I'm backing up what this gentleman said about his personal experience with that site, with that particular location, that particular property and that particular building was flooded and with very little notice. And so this is the fact that I'm actually referring to. It's not my personal opinion. I'm just referring to the fact that, no, the way I see it, all these mitigation proposals, even though they are sound as proposals, don't really add up to mitigating the issue for the neighboring properties, which I don't know if you've seen the site, but they're right, right next door. Like practically within touch and certainly within shouting distance.
What I will say is, you know, in areas where there are flooding, all throughout the state and when there are development projects, there is a requirement that in a floodway, you don't put any fill in a riverine floodway, because that pushes the floodwaters elsewhere. That's a FEMA regulation. We can provide a narrative on FEMA regulations, how we comply with FEMA regulations and so forth and so on. We are not creating any additional incurvious surface, no structures in the floodway, not adding any fill in the floodway that would push floodwaters onto any other property. So the conditions and the flooding that exist today are going to exist tomorrow, they're going to exist in 100 years, they're going to exist in 200 years. That doesn't mean that the property owner can't do things it's allowed to do on their property, otherwise that's a taking of land. So unless the town is willing to take that step of a taking of real property, we have to follow by the FEMA regulations, the flood regulations, and the development permits. I will respond with some more clarity in writing before the next meeting with the other stuff that we talked about this evening and any other questions you guys have. We're here to answer your questions, and if you want more information, we'll get it.
So I understand what you're saying about that you're, we don't, that we're putting obstacles in your way, basically. And I don't really agree with you saying that I'm doing it for personal reasons. I'm doing it by responding to the people in this room who I actually feel have had a chance to speak, but only at a public hearing. And the times that they've spoken have been out of turn because we have not given them another opportunity to speak or respond to the things that are being said in this room by the applicant. I think that they have valid points that should be heard in response to what the applicant is saying. And I, I don't feel that it's a, that has to be an adversarial kind of discussion. I think that it should be a discussion, and that's for the people in this room who do not have a platform to speak, to have to yell to be heard, makes it seem adversarial, but in fact, we should have a better way to do it. And that is my personal opinion.
Everyone has had a chance to speak, everyone has made their points. They, when points are made, we go to the applicant and we say, how are you going to respond to that? How are you going to address that issue? That's, that's what we can do.
But what they're trying to do is respond to the applicant. That's what is being, we're being accused of being unfair.
The concerns are noise. The concerns are safety with flooding, and the concerns are devaluing their property.
Those are three major concerns. There may be other ones.
Now, I have a question. Okay. This property, Mrs. Malone's property, Mr. Gutman's property, surrounds this property. You have no flooding on your property?
Well, we've had many floods. We've lost acreage. We've lost acreage.
Sure, I understand.
It's been right up the back door of my mother's house.
I lost eight feet in the last flood, oh, for my property. This is my question.
I'm sorry?
This is my question, though. Should you be, I don't want to say held responsible, because that's not what I meant, but should you be not renting that house or living in that house because something bad can happen there and the flood could come and you could drown and.
They're not having weddings.
What's having a wedding have to do with it?
It has to do 100 public people with it.
That's right. Seven to five.
The complaint is that it's noisy. The flooding concern that the community is bringing up is a red herring. And what I will say is, yes, it's important to listen to the community, and I'm going to load up my next submission with this, there are several, several, several cases that say community opposition that is generalized in nature without any technical support cannot be the basis for a planning board decision.
So make sure they spend $30,000 and then we can go before.
Yeah, we're in our own engineer, right. We don't count.
Because that's what we're struggling, right? They can afford this guy. In order to have a voice, they have to spend $30,000.
And all you need is a pair of ears to live next to a band and a wedding venue.
That has the noise monitors to comply with town code decibels.
They're trying to comply with everything that you have objected.
And traffic, too. I had their people try on my property.
There is no enforcement ability in this town of Shandaken.
I know that.
Thank you.
It means that enforcement is up to the neighbors. The neighbors have to call, raise and say, oh, I think there's 79 cars tonight. I think the noise is too loud tonight.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Otherwise, there is no enforcement.
Why are you even shuttin' you on open?
Bob, Bob, no, no.
You live on Wittenberg Road, you're not in the border. You have to stay in the traffic.
Wrong. She's my friend.
Who's paying you, Bob?
Who's paying you?
Nobody. Who's paying you? I live there. I live there.
Your house is in a floodplain, too.
You're damn right it is.
Guys, guys, come on. Stop screaming at each other.
I think we're confusing the flood issue with the community issue. It's two separate issues. They're not related to each other. The flood issue is a safety issue. The noise issue is the community issue. And I think to, the way I, I'm hearing the neighbors, it's the issue, and it is an insurmountable issue to them because there is no noise enforcement in Shandaken. And as she said, who's enforcing it? The neighbors that have to call and report. This is an undue burden on the community to have to constantly monitor something that doesn't even have to exist, because I don't see how the town code automatically makes it necessary to approve.
I don't want you guys to think we're not concerned, because we are concerned. That's why this has taken them a year. Okay? It's, we are not allowed to just say, we don't like it, you can't do it, the neighbors don't like it, you can't do it. As you know, we have to go by this book. That's what we're limited to. We're not interpreters.
But you know that I'm not sitting here and saying, we don't want it because we don't like it. There are very serious implications, impact of people that live in that community, very serious. It's your job to protect the community. That's what you are here to serve. I want to remind you that if you tried to build a house in the floodplain, you'd have to have floodways underneath it, you'd have to have walls that knock out. There's all kinds of things that have to be.
Our job is the entire community, which also includes the applicant. It's, we have to look at the entire thing. We can't just pick our favorite person and say.
We're not asking.
It doesn't even matter if I like the project. That's irrelevant.
Nobody's asking you to like or not like the project. We're asking you to make decisions based on merit.
I'm asking you to.
And information.
So, thank you for listening. I'm curious, not curious, I look forward to seeing what you put together. I think Vivian helps summarize this, you know, the intensity of the use is the incompatibility question in my mind. That gets to 116-39G. The floodway gets to, is not a red herring for me. The floodway for me is for the town of Shandaken not to take on a liability to approve a use that creates a harm to somebody at a wedding who's had too much to drink and the weather report snuck up on them. This town can't take the liability, which we're seeing in other cases in the United States. Why did they allow camps to be built along that river? I don't want this town to be liable for something that could happen in a floodway. That's my concern. Not a red herring, I want to be clear about that.
And we'll address it.
That's visionary, sir. That's visionary. Thank you. That's visionary.
And I also want to say, we've seen in this room tonight, neighbors coming together in support of an abutting neighbor who has issues with the impact that a project will have, will undeniably have if built next door. And you can see how the community comes together in that situation. I think you have something similar here, where the community is coming together, they're not all represented here, but you, if you were at the hearing when they did, you would have heard a lot of people saying the same thing as these people are saying tonight.
Sure. And all well and good, as long as this board's decision is within the confines of New York law. There are property rights here, and they can't just simply be taken away.
I understand that. I understand that.
Would you like to come to the workshop, or would you like to be put on the agenda for next month?
Like to come to it all, workshop, agenda, the whole thing.
Would this board like to invite Donna to attend the workshop so that the flood, Donna's our floodplain administrator. So the issues insofar as they pertaining to the flood zone should really be directed to her. She should be able to advise this conversation for residents and for the board and for everybody in a way that might help.
Will it be open conversation at the workshop? Or orderly open conversation?
Ordinarily.
Ordinarily open conversation? Can we ask questions? And can we challenge?
You can ask, please make them specific questions. That's what we're trying to move forward in specific ways, not general, not just general dislike of something.
What date is the workshop? Today's the 10th. There are 30 days of September, right?
24.
So it's two weeks from today.
September 24th.
Is there any chance we could see material in advance? Because we heard at the last meeting, we need to do a better job of letting the public know what they're being asked to comment on in advance. How soon could we get something?
I'm just going to get a calendar, 24th. Best case scenario, I would imagine our team can pull it together to get you something on the 17th. That's a week in advance.
I think that'd be helpful.
Worst case scenario, I don't see a submission going past the 19th, which would be that Friday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
That was it for us?
I don't even know what day of the week it is anymore. I don't know.
Did we ever approve the minutes from the last meeting?
No.
This is my third.
They're not ready.
Oh, I forgot. I didn't say that.
No.
I forgot we didn't say that. We don't have them.
We don't have them, okay.
So just point of order, we do not have minutes to the proximity of the last minute to this one. We will have them at the next meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.